Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
We'll call the meeting to order at 6:02 PM on Monday, August 17th. We need a motion to adopt the agenda. There was a request that we move the village park up to between four and five so that Danny can participate. If there's no objections, a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
There is one correction, you want that before or after?
Sure, I'll do it right now.
On 14th, next meeting shows September 3rd, I think that should be September 7th, which is Labor Day. Third would be a Thursday.
Oh, okay. Seven, okay.
Yep, you're, yeah, I thought that was early. Thank you.
A motion?
So moved.
Second? No further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And this is John. Give minutes. Do we have any, do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes of July 20th?
I have some corrections.
I've got a couple.
Okay.
It's August 3rd, August 3rd.
Is it August 3rd?
Yeah.
I hope so.
Then why does it say that, that said it's July 20th?
Because the first one I sent to you said July 20th.
Well, I get fooled all the time.
Then I corrected it.
Okay, so it's the digits of August 3rd. So if somebody want to go, whoever it is.
Second page at the very top should be J O E, not J O.
Where are you, Alan?
Second page.
Yeah.
It would be part of Article 6, but it's on the second page, at the very top, Joe Polio should have an E.
I don't see where you're talking about.
I don't either.
I don't even see Joe Polio live.
I don't have any Polio.
Seven, this Joe Polio is on seven, but it's right.
Well, then, I don't know what to tell you. On mine, it's page two, and on mine, it starts with number six, highway report is on page one. It continues onto page two.
Yeah.
At the top of page two, it says Chester Hill Spot, where culvert was reed line.
Oh, there it is, I found it.
And all repaired, Joe Polio.
Okay, I got it.
Okay.
The third, the third button on six.
Correct.
Okay.
On page three, at the top, tax rate. I think it should be finished rather than fished.
Maybe.
On page four.
Wait, wait a minute now. Yes, okay, I got it, okay.
On page four, number 15, cemetery land.
Yeah?
The, next to the last sentence, the select board agreed that a proper procedure would be to prepare a simple map, discuss the AMP, which probably should be map, with the streeters, and then get a town vote. So, the AMP should be map.
Got it.
Okay, oh, I got it.
All right, I got a couple.
Okay, Stan, go ahead.
On the first page, six, on the last bullet point, under, has been closed for years since 2014. Be learn, probably should be Bill Karns.
Yeah, what the hell happened there? I think I was thinking about.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh.
On second page, under, basically at seven, about the middle of the page, it goes into the discussions of the first point. Remove the paint critical area lands from, I would think, not from.
Yeah.
And I've got the thing for fished that Alan was talking about. And then I'm not sure what happened to chapter 10, it goes from nine, 10, nothing under 10.
No, 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 it go, okay, okay, that was, it was on that and then it just went down. So it, it ends, that sentence under nine ends with Attorney Salmon in Austrian. Number 10 is Porta Potty in the Village, in the Village. There's, those, those blanks that you see are just, they were, they got in there when I had the document up and I accidentally hit space or, or enter or something.
Okay, because Porta Potty is actually under 12 on mine.
No, it's 10.
It's under 12 on mine. And, yeah, I got AMP too, that Alan already got, so that's it.
Are there any others? If not, a motion to accept the minutes of August 3rd as amended?
Make that motion.
Okay, Alan, second? John, second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the minutes, say aye.
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 Okay, minutes have been correct, okay. The warrants were signed, I know everybody signed them. It takes care of that. And Danny, you're up with the highway report.
If I have the right agenda. The BBR grants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chuck Hill and Cabell, which we discussed, I think that was just Bill signed the agreement and sent it back.
Right.
And they did extend that out until next year to get that done, which is good because Woodchuck Hill has a lot of work to be done on, it's various cutting trees. So that one will probably, won't be finished until next year, but the Cabell one, we will have done this year.
Okay.
The invoices, Putnam Forest, that's on the grant that we just finished up for Putnam Forest and Record Roads. That stuff, I guess Bill sent in. And the town old stump dump report. Bill, we talked earlier, did you ever get ahold of that guy?
No, he never got ahold of me. He has, I have a message in to Tom Kennedy and he's supposed to get back to me. He hasn't been able, he hasn't gotten back to me. I knew he was on vacation last week, he was supposed to come back today. I, he may have, he probably was up to his ears in email, so.
So what I know, that I called him and talked to the guy that actually wrote it up. And what he was, the way I understood it with him is the reason he thought we needed to grade it off and cede it is because we said we no longer were using it because it didn't have the permit. But we do have a permit until 2024, I think it was. So he was just saying that if you're not using it, it has to be graded and ceded. So he didn't know everything that has to be done. He just writes up what he sees and the other guy does the rest of the procedure. So we're waiting on him because if we have the permit until 2024, just for our use, it's not open to the public. We need to find out what we need to do to keep it open so we have a place to dump. You know, the stumps and stuff we get from the town and ditching and stuff like that, because we need a place. So I guess we're just, we're still waiting on them on, on that part of it. It looks like it might be just some signage that we need to put up and keep track of tonnage and stuff, which we got to talk to about the amount, what we can dump.
Danny?
Yeah.
So, the fact that we're doing this Better Back Road and doing all of this ditching, we are now generating stumps like we have not done in recent times, correct?
Well, we've always generated some, but the more ditching we do, and yeah, we're going to generate more.
Well, there's really nothing we can do until the guy gets back those.
Correct.
Yeah.
But my point is, when you talk to him, you might point out, because we are following and being aggressive with the Better Back Roads grants, that we're generating more stumps than we have recently done.
Right.
This is in star stumps.
Right. The only thing that brought this all up is because we do have an active permit for a stump dump here. So that's what brought this up. If you don't have that permit, I, I don't know of any law that, as long as you're not dumping in wetlands, it says you can't dump material in a pile somewhere. So I think it's just because we have an active permit on a stump dump. And he was just doing, first time I've ever known of him to come by and do a check. So it's just a matter of getting that cleared up, is the way it sounded with him.
So it sounds, sounds to me like when we stopped using the stump dump, we took care of it at the town level, but that message never got to the state to close it out.
Correct, correct.
I'll just put this on the agenda for, for the next meeting and hopefully we'll hear from him if it's matter cleared up.
Yep.
The other thing is, is anything we need to know, Danny, or?
What's that?
His operations, you know, it's just a general report, what's going on?
Um, no, I haven't done over on 35, I went over to do that. But I'm waiting for a price back from two different outfits on a shoulder machine to put the rest of the shoulders out because it's going to take more than what I got there on the ground. So I'm waiting for two different companies just to give me a price so I can schedule it in and finish that on 35. I marked a couple culverts out today from Dig Safe, we have that one out on Stage Road that I'm waiting on Dig Safe to market. And I have a couple, one on Putnam Forest that we're going to do probably Wednesday to get started. And we're pretty good on grading, Mike did a lot of grading last week, got caught up on that. David's got a pretty good start on the over the rail mowing. You know, and when, we're filling in by hauling our sand in and stuff for the winter.
Danny, when are you going to start Hinckley Brook?
I believe that is closed as of Monday, next Monday, I think is the date. I just talked to Jamie before I came here and he's, it looks like everything is good and the, you know, it's going as planned, various hit box and all the wing wall. So I think he was saying Monday morning is when his probably closing, setting stuff.
Did you put the signs up yet?
We put them up last week.
Okay, good, I haven't been up there.
Yep.
Hey, Danny, on the Fire Pond Road, there's one halfway down, a big cement circle. Then there's one down at the bottom of the hill.
Yeah, the diffusers.
Yep, have you looked in those lately?
I haven't this year, we did last year, we used to check them once a year, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
The one at the top, or half, like you say, halfway in the bottom, they're, uh, diffusers, I guess is what they call them.
Energy absorbers, like.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, they reduce the flow of the water.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else with Danny?
Danny, they want you to stay one second though.
Yeah, I heard that, yep.
Yeah, Danny, just a question, the, the, the new truck, do you know when that's supposed to come?
I talked to him, actually called him this morning, and it, it's on its way. What they do is that they piggyback trucks to transport them. So there might be like three trucks being transported that they put on top of like the rear end of another truck. And supposedly the truck that's towing them all broke down, so it should have been here last Friday.
That's very encouraging.
I asked him about the schedule of getting the body on and he says it's three weeks out is when it's supposed to start. And he says that all looks like it's going to be right on time to start being built. And it takes him a good month to build it, so we're, we're talking two months before we see it.
But you'll have it for the winter season, which would be good.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Anything else with Danny? If not, then let's go to the village park.
You want me to go?
Yeah, because you got the update on Longview, so why don't you do that first?
So I just, it is pretty straightforward, I just wanted everybody to know that Longview did the first part of the work that they talked about doing, that, what was it, 11 or 14 acres? So that, that part has happened. There was a question on some buckthorn that was along the property line with the peels. And Bill filled in because I was away, but he made the contact with the peels. And that all came together well, that work got done as well, and the peels were happy to have it done. And that was important to us, not to leave that untreated. And then it just moves back into our area that we just paid to have treated. So first, first stage is, is done as, as promised. They will come back and do some touch-up, re-treatment later, but, so that part's good. There's this discussion that I wanted to have with you folks is Danny and Tim Morton, the forester for the state. The three of us went up and revisited the location of the access parking area. And we talked about trying to keep the cost down. And Danny and I are in agreement that he could work there cutting. I could work there as a volunteer, cut probably a couple days of cutting for the both of us and get that prepped. And then he could, with the equip, town equipment, reshape that so that the soil starts to drain out and get the moisture out of the soil. So it, it becomes either a good base for gravel at a, at a later date to finish the parking lot. Or if we get the shaping done and the drainage in, it will be a more effective log landing for this winter. I talked with Tim Morton, they've done the inventory. The program that does the processing had a little hiccup, so we should be hearing, I was hoping to hear today and I didn't. But we should hear some volumes from him pretty quick. My idea is to get that shaping done before we get a bunch of fall rains and changes to work conditions there. I think we should take advantage of the fact that it's pretty dry right now and get it shaped up. The only expense that we would have is Danny's labor and some equipment costs and some diesel fuel. But the gravel and all that would, that would all happen at some later date.
What about the culvert going in there off the road?
What's that?
A culvert to go in off the road there, is that the lockers thing or?
Doesn't need, doesn't need a culvert. Out at the, at the Fire Pond end, it will require a couple culverts as we progress away from Fire Pond. Beyond Village Park, there'd be a couple culverts required there.
There's already a culvert that goes across the road, right?
Yeah.
Start that entrance.
So what you're, so what you're proposing is to start this now, the prep work, with, with basically no cost except for where the labor is there and some diesel fuel. And, and in hopes that the inventory will show that we have sufficient funds to go forward.
Well, I, I think developing, developing a parking lot, there's something we would want to do at some point in the future, even if we didn't have a timber sale. If we want to really, you know, make it a real park, I think that's part of the program, but.
Well, how does it feel about?
It's just my, my thoughts of looking at workloads, looking at soil and, you know, work, trying to work with the weather. If we get a bunch of fall rains or those hurricanes that come up the coast, we get a lot of water. It'll be a lot of work. And then fitting into Danny's schedule with what he has to do. So that's just my thoughts, I wanted to bring that out for discussion for the whole board so that it's, you, you decide what you want to do.
How does everybody feel about this?
Makes sense to me, I think, I think it's a great idea.
Yep, good idea.
Okay, so Danny, do you have, do you have some time? And then, I mean, Alan, are you going to cut all the trees down yourself, is that what the plan is?
Well, Danny and I together, we're going to work together.
I'm going to supervise that, Alan.
Danny's going to supervise me, right.
Somebody's got to.
And I'll sign my volunteer statement, all that sort of stuff. But he and I will pick days that, that work for us and weather-wise and also, you know, with what he's got going on with the highway, you know, with his other two employees.
Okay, so is everybody, okay, do we need a motion for this or?
I, I would like one because I want it to be on record that it was discussed and, and this is a transparent operation.
Okay, so you want to make that, you want to make that motion, Alan, since you know what you want to do here?
Uh, the motion that the select board allow me to work as a volunteer, cutting with Danny. And we prepped the site that will become the future parking area and will become our log landing for the work that we intend to do. Just, would like permission to go forward.
I'll second that.
Okay. So haven't entered any other further discussion on this? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay, good.
Can just wait a second?
Yeah, sure.
Just want to finish. Okay, I got it. Okay, and the second was, was Stan?
John, no, Stan, right, Stan.
Okay, I got it.
All right, Kim. Kim, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, you all set?
Yep.
Thanks, Danny.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Dan.
Um, before Danny goes, Bill, were you able to ask Danny about the signage for the pool?
No, I didn't. Oh, no, yes, I did, he hadn't got it either, so I got to check with him.
Okay.
I got to check with the sign people because they promised me it was on the way and that was about a month ago. And I thought it was maybe sitting up there when, when all this other stuff is going on, so, anyway. Yeah.
That was one of my questions for Danny. And I'm really happy to hear that the truck's not going to be here for a couple more months since we have no money coming in. So, that brings me to the tax rate.
You always like to hear that, Kim.
I know, I don't like to spend the money. Still no tax rate yet from the education department. I've been working really hard all last week and this week of trying to get some answers. Nancy has been great about helping me touch base with somebody in the education department. No one's responding to my calls nor my emails. She was able to get in touch with someone from the tax department who was very nice to explain the situation to us. They've not gotten a download, apparently after our vote on June 25th. The actual budget that was voted on stays in our business office here at the WN SU for 30 days. And once the 30 days is up, then it gets sent to the state ed department and then they do their magic and work the numbers. And if the numbers aren't quite right or they have questions, they send it back and forth and back and forth. So my question is to the business office here in Brockingham is, who sent it and when did they send it? Did it actually get sent in on time? That's all I'm asking. And I cannot get an answer out of anybody from there. They're all really stressed out. There's been a whole lot of changes that have been happening in the issue, so, you know, that, that's understandable. But I'm, I'm just looking for some sort of indication, when did it get sent so I can give us a timeline? But I'm, I'm getting nowhere, it's, it's frustrating. And so today I did call a couple of the other, I did call one other town, Westminster, to kind of see what they're doing and, you know, kind of boat they're in. And they did not want to send out a bill and then send a second set of bills. But their select board chose to send out bills. They collect taxes in September and in August. So they were, what, what the treasurer wanted to do in the business office, wanted to just push their first payment back a month, October, but the select board said, no, they wanted to actually send out a bill and then send a second set of bills. We're just pushing ours and I don't know how far back we're going to keep pushing, but we are pushing ours back so far. I don't know, I, we're still doing okay, we still got enough in the checking account. It's kind of scary, we just got the re-treatment bill, so I do have to pay that. And I'm, I'm glad the truck is being held off. The only other suggestion, talking with Nancy and Hardy today, they came up with an idea of possibly running the taxes with the tax rate for the non-resident, because we already know what the non-resident tax rate is. We can, we can set our tax rate for the municipal, run everybody's, but only mail out the non-residents. And maybe that's a possibility, so at least we have a bit of cash flow. And then when we do get the final tax rate for the homestead, run another set of them and then just collect on the homestead. And so everybody's only getting one bill, not getting two bills, not getting a revised bill. I guess we can cross that bridge when we get there. We're hoping to hear something or get some money. I think I've got like six, six hundreds in our, in our overall checking account. 150 is going out as it is right off the top for paving that we had done. And then our, anything else that we have on a weekly base, on a bi-weekly payroll is going to go out in our normal pay. So I can get away with a few more weeks, but that's where we're at. I don't know what more I can do. I've tried everything to get answers and I'm getting nowhere.
You could send out, you could send out two bills if you had to, I mean, right?
It's an expense, it's a $2,000 expense.
Yeah.
It is, um, it's, Westminster is getting a whole lot of feedback from the rate being high as it is. And that's only their first set, there's another set going out. So they're not, the taxpayers themselves are doing a lot of complaining and we're going to be in the same boat. Right now, Edie had estimated before she left in February that we would be $1.72. So 1.7214, she believes, but I can't send bills out with an estimate.
Well, is there?
The other thing that we get, we encountered last year when we did that, not only did we have the $2,000 extra expense of sending it out, when the second bill went out, we had to do a different colored bill. So when people filed their income tax, they needed to use the second bill, not the first bill. That was confusing for everybody. The escrow companies were only getting the first bill and not the second bill. So they kept paying all year on the first bill without the taxpayer knowing that they were behind every single quarter because they weren't paying the right amount. It was, it's, it's a nightmare, but if we have to, we will.
Well, Kim, is there any downside to sending out the non-resident tax bills and, and holding back the, the homestead ones?
I don't think there's any downfall to it. I'm wondering, and I'm just thinking as I'm talking about it, if we can legally, I mean, that's, I mean, are we within our rights to just pull out non-residents and have them pay? I, I want, I would want to make sure with the tax department that that is an option that we could do.
Well, what about VLCT too, I think I was certainly contacting them as well.
I would check with all of them.
Uh, Kim, you said you had $600,000 and you were paying out 150 right off, right?
Yep.
So that left you with 450. Can you project out a month or, or whatever, what we need?
If we don't have any major expenses, we should be fine for another month. That's why when he was talking about the truck, I was just holding my breath and then he said, it'll be like two months. It's like, oh, thank God, because I don't want to, you know, use the money if we had to.
So we're, so we're good for six weeks?
Yes, I would say so. And not only that, we did have, we've got two separate, we've got one other separate account set aside that's just for Walker Bridge, but we, it's in a repo, but we really shouldn't use it anyways because it's a reserve and it needs to be approved by the townspeople. So we do have that other. So we do have that other extra account sitting there.
Wait, Kim?
Hmm?
Kim?
Yep.
Kim?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you not hear me?
Okay. Uh, I do now. Um, we also have, I call it the rainy day fund, that, that's not the right name, but that extra, the surplus money that we've been encouraged to hold on to.
That's part of the six.
We, we have that money. That's not our preference to spend it. But uh, just a hypothetical question, if we really had to, we could go and use that money and then replace that money in that account when we finally got around to collecting taxes? That's possible?
No, well, what, what it is, is, is all part of that 600, okay? So everything's in one account. And, and I'm counting myself, sub-accounts, it's in a sub-account, but it's all within that one $600,000 account.
Okay.
So, so when you look at our balance sheets, which I haven't given you one yet for this month, um, yeah, for this total year fund balance, we would be in the negative. You're, you're just talking this year, but because we're talking about all of our accounts, um, we're okay.
Right, yeah, I got it.
But that, that's where we're at with the tax rate. We're, I, I, we're certainly not ignoring it. And Nancy's doing whatever she can help. Um, as soon as we get it, I've got all three listers that are willing to start, you know, getting these bills out. We've already got them all stamped. We did that during voting day because we were sitting there, we're just waiting. So at some point, whenever we get it, I'm hoping we have an emergency meeting maybe and set the tax rate. So, um, any other questions on the tax rate?
Well, how's, how does the board feel about this? We don't have another meeting until, I mean, we could have a special meeting, but we don't have any, um, any regular meeting for another three weeks. And if she does, if you don't, if we don't get a, uh, answer in three weeks, then I think we have to do something. And it's, I think John, John asked the question, we're good for three weeks, correct, Kim?
Yeah, we should be, yeah.
So maybe what we should do is wait and see what happens. And then if we're still in the same boat on the seventh, then we can decide what we want to do.
Let's wait till the next meeting.
Yeah, but we do have that Walker Bridge thing, right? We could steal from if we had to.
Yeah, you would have to call, uh, you'd have to call a special town meeting for the Walker Bridge one.
But there is funds if you had to.
Yeah, but it's a 30-day notice for a meeting of any sort.
No, you don't, basically that's not available, not if you have to have a town meeting.
No.
You'd have to have a town meeting. But um, ma- but maybe the non-resident versus the homestead, that's an option. Um, but I, I'll keep you guys posted as things progress.
Well, maybe Kim, we should call, uh, call the state or call V L C T to see if that is, even is an option in the event that we are forced to do that.
Yeah, I'll work on that tomorrow because that was just brought to me by Nancy and Hardy today as a suggestion and, and I think I've got enough envelopes and I've got enough already pre-printed tax bills that I could probably pull that off. It'd be close, but I could pull it off.
So, uh, question to the board. If, if Kim follows up on this non-resident and finds out it is legal to do that, do we still want to wait three weeks before we take action? Or would we like her to proceed and send out the bills? Um, assuming V L C T and the state says it's, it's okay to do the non-residents?
I'd send out the bills and make sure you get some funds.
Yeah, I would send out the bills as well, as long as it's legal.
So would I.
Okay.
John, Kathy, how do you feel?
Yeah, I, go ahead.
Yeah, if it's legal, fine. What's, what's, how many non-residents do we have offhand?
Um, if Nancy's on, maybe, yeah, Nancy is on, if she can answer that. Um, she, or Hardy would be able to answer that better than I would.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question, I was.
Kathy, could you ask again?
How many non-residents do you, do we have?
Um, well, I can tell you the reverse. I can tell you that there are about um, 125 or so homestead people. So to extract that from the non-residents, um, so most of the bills are non-residential. Not that it's not, that's because so many people own multiple properties and they only have one property that's homestead. And you know, if they're homestead and the rest of their properties would be non-res. So it's not like most of our people are non-resident, it's most of the property is non-resident.
And Nancy, could you, could, could you uh, come up with how much that, in dollar value that would represent?
Well, assessment-wise, I, 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 maybe, but um, Kim would have to look at it tax-wise. I, I could, we could only do that assessment-wise.
We could come up with a pretty good percentage, John.
Yeah, the man says, yes, we can.
Okay.
Why don't you do this, Kim? Why don't you do some investigation to see if it's legal first? And if it is, maybe you can get some numbers and, and then give it to Bill and Bill could forward it on to the board.
Yep, okay.
I, I, I would make a motion, if, if Kim does the research and finds out that it's legal to send out the non-resident uh, bills, that we give her authorization to do that. I, I wouldn't see any reason, i- if we can, I see no reason to wait.
Yeah, I would second that.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm going to have to come back to the board anyways to set the tax rate.
Sure.
The municipal.
Okay. So, so basically, when you're, when you get the answer, then we could call, call us. You let Bill know and I'll call a special meeting.
Exactly.
We can, we can deal with the, with issues.
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
What do you want to do with the motion that's out there? You want to retract or?
Let's, let's keep the, let's keep the motion anyway because this way we don't have to deal with it later date. So is there any, a, any other discussion on the motion of, of going with the non-resident tax rate first if it's legal? If there's not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so Kim, you have the, you have carte blanche and then you, when you're ready and you know something, let Bill know, he'll let me know and we'll call a special, a special meeting, convenience of everybody and we'll deal with it.
Okay.
Okay?
Then, um, just letting you know also that I'm working on the grant process for um, digitizing our land records or I shouldn't say digitizing, um, i- is putting them online. So it would be scanning because most all of my records are already digitized. They're just not set up in a program where they're scanned and available online for researchers. And um, through the COVID grant that's gone out, um, there is a grant of 20,000, $2 million for a first come, first served for each town. See, to $20,000 to um, get their records so that they are um, up and online. This is something I've talked about for quite some time, but have never taken the initiative or spent the money to do it. Um, so I'm working on that grant. I've got a couple of presentations tomorrow and I've got two quotes from two different companies um, to move forward on it. It's a very short time span to get um, five years worth done by November 1st and then to get 10 years done by December 1st. And the companies actually come in and they do all the, the scanning and digitizing and get us up online. Could be for a possible $16,000. But um, I'm not committed to it until I make sure I do get the grant money. Um, there is a chance though that there's so, there's not, there are towns that are already online than towns that are not. So they're wondering if the 2 million at 20,000 a town is too little and that there's a possibility there could be more funds out there. So I might be able to get more years than just the 10, so I'm working on that.
Kim, I have a question on that. How did they do that? The security of them doing that?
The way it was explained.
Companies?
Yeah, the way it was explained to me is researchers have to buy into um, the um, company. Um, so it's like $4 for the day or they pay by the month and that allows them to go into the system and retrieve what they want. And then, once they retrieve what they want, they, that one of these companies that I spoke to keeps track of how many copies this particular person takes. And so for every researcher that hits the site, takes a copy, the company itself will then send us a check for what I normally would have collected in person for a researcher. So it's, it's secure and it's our database. So if we decide to stop doing online or, or, or having it available, it's our database that's being stored. So that comes back to us.
So, do you have to have a separate computer to do that to keep them actually out of your home?
Right, um, when I talked with one company, um, it doesn't sound as though, I said I had my own computer and we have a scanner. Um, that was great and that brings the price down. I haven't gotten an estimate from them. Another company said that their quote, the first 5,500 comes with a scanner and it comes with a PC to do your recording on. And it also comes with another PC just for researchers to use alone, so that they're not using my computer or have any access. And that's standard for them. Uh, and he's the one that's going to come talk to me tomorrow. And then I'm um, attending a webinar on Thursday on how it works. And I should probably talk to a few more towns as to how they like the program, how it works. It's not new, it's just new to us. They've been online for a while, but if they're all bigger towns, I can afford it too. So I'm gonna, and it would have been handy, um, I mean, we got, we got by because I worked the entire time through COVID. Um, I just did things by people requesting it. I would send them the copies and I would send them an invoice. Um, but in the real world, it would have been convenient for them to sit at home, do their research and we still get the payment for it and it's online and there's no interacting with my office. It's the way to go.
Sounds to me.
Yeah.
Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, anybody have anything else of Kim? Right, if not, Kim, thank you so much.
Yep.
And we'll be waiting for your answer on legality, so.
Me too.
But hang in, we have enough money, I think, so. Doors come stores. Dave, you're on now, planning commission, go ahead, Dave.
Hey folks, uh, there are two items on there. One is the town plan, one is the village center. Um, I guess start with the town plan if there's no objection to that. Um, we have a town plan, as you know, that is approved. There is a reason to change that town plan because of the issue that Al brought up for me at least about a year ago with the idea that we've got this critical resource land that is owned by the state and town government. Um, and the proposal that you folks put out was to eliminate all of the pink except for the three streams um, on the southern end of town, if I understood it correctly. Um, if I could get permission from Bill or whoever is in charge so I can show the town proposed land use map as a reference? Is that all right, or I don't know if I have?
I, I would prefer you didn't because last time that happened, it got all screwed up. I, I can, I can put the, the future land use map from the town plan up on the screen if you want me to.
I don't really need it, I just, um, all right, I had a couple of things I was planning on doing, but I'll, I'll figure out how to work around it. Um, anyways, folks, what happened was we had a discussion at the last so, planning commission meeting. Uh, Al was there, Kathy was there, we had very few, if none, Suzanne Walsh, I think Welsh was the only non-select board planning commission member there. But we had a discussion about what does that mean and where do we go with it? And I left that meeting with a consensus from the planning commission and I believe support from Alan and Kathy. And in a minute, I'll uh, let them chime in, is instead of changing it to critical resource land, we discussed changing it to just calling it public land. And um, I am going to read actually, sorry, to use the chat, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Let's see if I can do this. I am just pasting in draft words that I have not finished yet that would look something like the following, let's see. It's, it's going to look long for, and send, here we go. I'll give you all a, a minute to kind of review that. Th- this is not ready for prime time. We're trying to, I am by myself, because we haven't met since last Tuesday and we don't have really a committee on this, trying to capture what public lands are with this idea a- as we discussed in the last meeting, that they're owned by the public. So they kind of have this world out there that's not the same as anything else. Um, with the idea that the state and the town have the democratic right, because the community owns it, um, to do what they will. Now that said, it, there's, you can see in the second part, there's an assumption that anything planned that the state or towns would want to do would obviously align with the state and town plans. Because there's state and town plans out there that, that guide what they do. So, um, then that brought up the discussion of, oh, if that's public land is really land owned by the state or the towns, what is that? And I called up Kim, we started, she started rattling off all the things, the cemeteries, the um, the, the FEMA buyouts, the school, et cetera. And so I took that list that she helped me generate, I sent it to Hardy and Nancy, they edited it and updated it. And now it's kind of a longer list than I envisioned. I envisioned four or five parcels, six or seven maximum. You know, now it's, I am going to go up and look at it. The style cemetery is on it. Well, I didn't know there was a style cemetery, but now I'm intrigued to go look at it. So anyways, Al and Kathy, maybe you want to go first? I'll stop there and, and see what people think. This is what we're thinking of doing. Now, I'm going to take, before I turn it over, make sure Bill, I got this part right. Whatever we do, if we want to have a vote by the town people at town meeting, which seems like a lifetime away still, we have to have all edits ready to publish, including the report that goes with it by October 2nd. So the more time we put into this, the greater wonderful, wonderful changes we can make. But it may be eight years before we finish the process of getting voted on it, or we make some quick changes. And then, I, where we go from there? Because between now and October 2nd, we don't have time to do much more than that. I'd like to discuss this issue and then switch gears to discuss the invasive species. And as a separate issue, if that's all right. But it's your meeting and I'll let, I'll stop and talk and let somebody else fill in.
Well, I guess it seems how I was the one that did most of the talking, uh, for the select board. All I did was try and portray what is in our minutes that we just voted to uh, adopt. So I tried to, to relay that knowing that the planning commission had already seen a copy of, of that or, or thinking they had anyways. Um, and, and so we discussed some of it and then it, 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 the feedback I got was that it would take some work, but the, the planning commission seemed willing and, and felt that it was uh, worth pursuing. And then it got to be 7 o'clock and I, Chris and I left to, to go count votes. So Kathy, if you stayed on the meeting afterwards, maybe you can take it from there or, or, um, that's all I can say, is I, I delivered to them and what the reasoning was, um, what we had voted on.
Well, I think, um, you talked a little bit about what Dave is talking about, the public land. And it would, without, they would have a plan with that, correct, Dave?
Say that again?
You would have some kind of plan to go along with public, the use of the public property.
Let me see if I can answer, yeah, I, if I understand your question, you know, it's not just going in and adding a definition, getting a crayon out, coloring some areas and calling it done. Um, a concern I have, and I've already started on this, and I kind of use it like whether you're, you're working on a rust spot on a car or you're working on a finish on a, a table. I'm, I'm a handyman, so those are things I relate to. And you, you start working on it and it's a little quarter inch diameter problem and you, and, and all of a sudden it's a half inch. And then it's, it's, it's in, and all of a sudden, half the car is being rusted out because you're working on it. And to change what you see in the chat requires other changes with. requires other changes within the chapter. I've already taken almost two full pages and I, and I, you spend so much time trying to word smith and edit what's there and chisel away that I have literally taken it and moved it aside a- and, and almost started again in this section. Again, you don't need to know the minutia that we deal with on our side of the world here. Um, but that October 2nd, which is not a qualify, it has to be deadline. We don't have to vote at the town meeting. But if you want to, it's October 2nd. You know, we can do a more thoughtful, timely thing into this whole process, so. Cause.
Well, um, Dave, not, not to be a smart guy, but, um, I, I think all we were asking is to remove that critical, tho- those four, the state land and, uh, wildlife management area and the state park, to remove those from the pink category. They're gonna go into either green or white after that. They can be managed, uh, timber management and, and they, they could have work done on them. So, um, going in and inventorying the, all of the other properties and cemeteries and all, that, that's, I didn't ask for that and the select board didn't ask for that. So if you wanna make it a bigger project, that's totally up to the planning commission, but that's, that's more than we asked for.
I, I keep it simple.
Yeah, Dave, I don't, I don't see the, I mean, if the planning commission is willing to, to make some changes, like just taking the, the pink out of those, those, those areas, that's it? I mean, that shouldn't take very long to do, if the planning commission agrees.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't take anywhere near as long as going with what, again, the consensus the planning commission gave me for a directive at the last meeting. And I can represent my own personal feelings here and only limited what the planning commission feels, but I can't speak for them and say, okay, we're gonna do this, that or the other thing. Cause they, we'll, we'll have a meeting and they'll say, nope, that's not what we're gonna do. Um, as a reminder, whatever we do, you guys have absolute right to do whatever you want with it afterwards. So, um, you know, there is that clear caveat that we come to consensus you don't like, obviously you can change that, but, um.
Well, they, could I, could I, if I could speak here on timing, if the select board changes that you're not making town meeting?
Oh, good point, thank you, excellent point.
What I would, the way you could make town meeting is you guys write something, get the select board to adopt it and send it back to you as a mandate for this is, this is the select board recommended amendment to the town plan. You then immediately go to a, a notice, public hearing, you send it to the select board, it goes to a, a public hearing, the select board therefore, having sent it to you and written it, but, uh, or approved it before you guys even had the hearing, it goes back to the select board and the select board says, yeah, that's what we wanted and don't change it, then you can go to the town meeting with it. That's a way to shortcut the time. But if, if, if you send them something that they're not gonna vote for, it's, we're wasting our time, uh, as far as getting it to the town meeting. Not wasting our time, but wasting our time as far as getting it to town meeting.
Thank you.
And my suggestion, Dave, is that once, once, before you actually send it to the select board, maybe a week, two, three or four weeks ahead of time, whatever, if you could send the draft to the select board and we could give you a comment, then you would know, um, where the select board stands.
That's exactly why I'm here, actually. So I go down the right path to begin with.
Because if you said something at, at the last minute and the select board doesn't approve it, then you, you'd never make the town meeting.
Which again is not ultimately critical, but it sure makes sense to try to set that as a goal. I, I guess other select board folk, do you have any opinion on this? Does it make any difference one way or the other, I?
No, I, I think what, what you should do is not make it so complicated and do what Al suggested to you, to the planning commission. And it's very simple and that's it.
All right, um, whoop, hold on a second, folks. But I, I also have a question. The other thing that was sent to the planning commission was to remove, uh, but future development should be weighed against the, um, desire to preserve the area on the resource lands. What does the planning commission stand on that one?
The consensus that that will be removed, no, no controversy whatsoever on that.
I didn't, I didn't get, what was that, what was that question?
The, the, uh, resource lands and.
Oh, okay, yeah, I, I got, yep.
Okay, it would seem, it would seem to me, Dave, that if you, if the planning commission would adopt the, but remove the, the future development and use, remove the pink on the, those areas, then there shouldn't be any issue. You can certainly move forward.
Well, and as you know, we gotta be careful, it shouldn't be an issue to the select board. Remember, and Kim's not here, she wasn't there for, she was there for the five years of fighting among seven people to get a town plan to you in the first place. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm always hesitant about anything we do because of the culture of this wonderful town we live in.
No, but, but my, my main meaning was that if the, if the planning commission agrees, then we move forward. If they don't agree, then you have another issue.
And, and I don't think, but I gotta go, Al, I sent an email out to poll the planning commission today. Al, I sent one to you as well, cause I, I, your involvement is, to see if everybody's available next Tuesday for a special meeting to discuss this. Now, the directive they gave me was to develop this public land component. The, the, the direction you are selling me is to go in a different way. I guess I'll try to put together two and figure out what they're thinking and, and it's up to them. I'm the one that came up with this, it was not a thought out idea, this public land thing. It was part of the discussion, it was a brainstorm, hey, what about this? And, and this is where we ended up. So I, I guess I will go to them at the special meeting next Tuesday, do as best I can to explain what you're saying, it makes perfect sense to me. I'm not gonna lie, from a personal point of view, it's a lot easier because I'm the one that's doing the writing and, and, you know, is, Al knows, anytime he sends me an email, I respond with a whiny sound because I'm so busy these days. Um, which I apologize for, but it's the way it is. So I can go forward with that piece as long as, I guess I'll take a five second wait unless I'm missing anything. Um, Stan, I don't know if I heard from you or?
Well, I was just, no, I, I started to say, I think you've gotta take the, the root and what Alan says sort of makes sense and just, just go from there. Just kinda keep it, you know, keep the, the, the most simple approach that you can do and try to accomplish the, the most you can with it.
So those, those places on the future land use map will not be identified. I- i- is that, there will be no pink if it's, the Duran Forest is in white, then it'll be white. It, there may be a little boundary line around it, but there will be, no colored distinction for the Putnam Forest, for Molly Beatty, et cetera, et cetera. Is that clearly what you're saying?
It, it's either gonna be green or it's gonna be white.
Right.
And, and, and the description that goes with green or white goes with it. Those state lands, those state lands, um, will still be delineated by a property line and they will, they will be managed as state lands. I, I should share with the group that there was some discussion about, well, what if the state comes in and wants to put a three hundred foot cell tower or whatever the, you know, there, it was trying to be hypothetical. And, and I said, look, you know, the, the state is not run by one person, even though we have a governor, but as far as state lands management goes, they have to write state lands management plans and they have to have public hearings at state man. So all the stuff that we're going through at the town level, the state has to do that too. So there is still an opportunity for, uh, citizens of the town of Grafton to participate in that process.
Well, and I guess to piggyback on that, our town plan has been approved by the regional commission, which says that our town plan conforms and aligns with the state goals. And our goals and their goals are really very much the same thing in terms of land use, et cetera, et cetera. So all of it makes sense. I have no problem, uh, advocating for that at the next meeting and I will be back in touch with you, um, in terms of how that goes. I, I have not put those glasses on and looked at the town plan. I do see that as easier, I see a lot of changes I've been working on not needing to be made. Um, but that's between now and next Tuesday. Um, the other piece, and it may free up me to have a little more time, and Al, I'm not making a quick commitment yet, um, is something on invasive species. Al, I got about eight emails from you and I got others from others and most of them I have not even had a chance to read yet because it just cannot be a priority in my life with my school starting up. I'm a public educator and I'm sorry, life and death of my kids are kinda consuming my entire mantra of everything these days. So invasive species, I'm not sure where to go with this one.
But Dave, are you the only one that could write a document for the rest of the planning commission? Um, I, I look at your commission and who you have and I look at who is working and who's retired and backgrounds of individuals. I- i- if I was you, and, and, and you, you may not agree, but I would ask Chris Wallace, geez, Chris, could you look at this stuff that Al sent me? And, and see if there's something in there that we can use? And i- if it's so good that we could just take that name out and put Grafton, that would be perfect. Or what's the closest thing that's there that is a document that, that we can use? I, don't re, don't rewrite the wheel, you know? Find one that is pretty close. And there's a lot of good information there.
Well, hopefully you show up at next Tuesday's meeting, because I'm gonna ask all of them in public for somebody to stand up. And if they don't stand up, again, I can beg, borrow and plead, but unless you pay them a lot more than you're paying them right now, I don't have a lot of leverage on these folks.
Oh, I, I'm not asking you to beat them, I'm just asking to, to say, Chris, would you be willing to do that? And he could say yes or he could say no, you know?
I guess, just know I can go down the line. It is a.
Well, I look at the other people and I know they all have real jobs and, and, and time commitments. And so, I don't know, just something to think about. But you, if you call a meeting next week, uh, let me know and I'll be there.
All right. We, we, there is a consensus that there should be something in there. It is a concern for our forests. We gotta figure out how to do it right without short circling it. And, you know, as I joked the other night and just me putting the sentences is, oh, invasive species are a bad thing, next sentence, you, you, it needs some meat to it that, um, so. We're hoping to tackle it, we got until October 2nd. My hope is it's, whatever we come up with is not gonna be controversial. So when we hit that, you guys with that, it'll be more of a, yep, we agree with that, not, you know, oh, wait a minute, we said we wanted critical resource and those kinds of things, so. I guess I'll keep informed after, after next Tuesday's meeting how that goes.
Right, Dave, can we, I think we talked about, can we move on to the, um, Village Designation Center?
We can, I'm not sure where I'm supposed to go. I, as I understand the minutes, um, I was supposed to call a community or public meeting. All I did was in the Grafton News put in as part of the last meeting that we would be discussing the village center. Other than select board guests, we had one, as I mentioned earlier, show up. Um, I understand several of you have gone out and asked several business folks about their opinion of it. Um, right now, I would love for somebody to make a motion and say, you know what? This is the right thing to do, make a motion that we support it. I get you guys to sign that, um, um, thing I had that says you guys all support it. It's the last piece missing, once I get that, I put it all together and I send it to the state. I've already been working with them, so everything is pre-approved, that we've edited, changed, modified. So now it's just a matter of them approving it. So, um, that's kinda where we're at. I did have an entire PowerPoint presentation that I planned on giving as a meeting kind of presentation at the, um, last planning commission meeting, but everybody's like, no, Dave, we don't wanna see it. Well, uh, kind of explaining what it's all about and it's got some things like, if you're not aware, it actually says in the land use chapter that we're gonna apply for it. And it's a recommendation in the land use chapter. Um, I was just seeing that Springfield Business has got another, I can't remember how much tax credits from it. So, um, I could go on, I don't know if they're, they're, where I'm supposed to go from here. I, I was surprised that there was a little concern, it seemed like such an easy slam dunk that, um, kinda stumbled on it. But that's where I'm at and it's done and the ball's kind of up to you now.
Dave, can I read the minutes? It's, I think it's very simple. It was agreed among the members of the select board that if, if the public approved, the PC should present the application to the select board for approval and the filing of the application and the select board would be inclined to apply for the designation. All we're asking is have a public hearing and if everybody likes it, we're ready to go forward. That's very simple.
Not public hearing? Or do you mean public hearing?
Well, but how, how are you gonna get, how, if you don't have a public hearing, how are you gonna get the information from the public?
I guess, Bill, what's a public hearing mean to you?
Well, you gotta have a pub, public discussion about it. It doesn't have to be, I don't think we're talking about a regulation public hearing, but the select board has to have something that, that the, the public can speak at. And the best way to do it is call it a public hearing and then immediately go into a select board meeting and either approve it or, depending on what happens at the meeting, approve it or disapprove it. I think the select board's ready to move on, Dave.
Dave, I think to summarize, the folks that we, we've heard from, um, don't, the, the businesses in town don't oppose it, but their comment is, i- in reality, it isn't going to help them that much. At least the ones, there may be some that we haven't heard from, but the ones we have heard from have said, yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it. It's, really isn't gonna do that much for me, but I'm not against it. And as long as nobody's against it, we would support it.
I think it's very simple, just, I mean, we, uh, there's no opposition from the select board, but we need.
I'd love somebody to make a motion right now, if there's no opposition, I'll be honest. I don't have time for this. I am gonna put this on hold because I do not have time for this. My life is about to turn upside down, gentlemen and ladies. And I, 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 I just, I'm gonna put it on the back burner until the winter or late winter.
Well, then.
I'm sorry, this one's gonna be put on hold then, all right?
Just add, of all the meetings that you have, that the PC has had, has invited the public and there has not been any, uh, discussion or anything negative about, um, the village designation that I know of.
Yeah, I, that's what, that was kinda my opinion too. I mean, if you guys can't get anybody to your meeting to, that wanna discuss the, the, uh, village designation, I'm not sure that by us putting the thing out, we wanna get, uh, fifty people, whatever, together to discuss it. I don't know, I, I don't, I don't see the big deal about that. As far as I'm concerned, as far as a board right now, I, I, you know, that's, that's why we're voted in to make the tough decisions, that this in fact is a tough decision. We oughta just go ahead and, and, and make it. I'd make a motion that we, uh, go ahead and, and approve the, uh, village designation.
I second it.
But the, the, the application for?
Well, whatever, the proper word, sure.
Well, I second it.
Do we have discussion, or do we have a motion on the floor to, to move for the, with the application? Do we have any discussion?
I'll call the vote.
If there's no discussion, then let, let's, let's do a roll call so we all know. Uh, everybody in favor, say, who, Alan, are you in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Stan?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
John?
Yeah, aye, aye.
Okay, Joe, aye, so it's okay, so go ahead.
I will keep you informed, I will be hopefully getting it done for September 5th, submitted and going up to Montpelier on September 28th for their meeting. I'm required to go up and, and in person have that discussion. With that, I appreciate it and once I see.
If you want them to sign it, Dave, David, excuse me, if you want them to sign it, just bring that form here with their signature lines and I'll put it here, they'll come in and sign it.
Okay. Yeah, I've got a resolution, it's a little fancier than just the minutes. They want either a resolution or the minutes. Um, five signatures on a resolution, I think it's just a real classy way to go if you're willing to do that.
Yes, that, that, that would be perfect.
If there's nothing else for me, I'll done and I'll sign out.
Okay, and Dave, just you, you let us know how you wanna proceed with these changes and, and with, on Tuesday and we'll go forward from there.
I will continue to work on that. Now hopefully later this week, I'll get to all your emails.
Okay.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thanks, Dave. All right, move on, quarter potty in the village.
I, I check it every Monday morning after figuring that it's been there a week and over the weekend and it's been in really good shape. figuring that it's been there a week, and over the weekend, and it's been in really good shape. The only thing in there, leaves, as in tree leaves, have blown in, and that's the only thing I found that was out of place in there. It, uh, had paper, and it wasn't a mess. And, um, I don't know how many people use it, because we don't have a counter, but, uh, I'm just kidding, uh, but, uh, but, but anyway, it works, it's worked really well.
Yes.
I'd like to bring up something to the board for discussion. Uh, I'd like to write a letter, have the board authorize, and have Bill from the select board write a letter to the Improvement Association, um, asking them to, um, pony up some money. They, they had in their budget to put a porta potty in from, um, Memorial Day through the pool closes, and I don't know how much money that is, whether it's three months, four months, whatever. Why couldn't they take that money and put it towards the, the porta potty, even if it wasn't until the whole time, but at least there would be three or four months of, of money that could go towards that, that would lessen the burden to the taxpayers and whatever. Um, I just think, I just think the, the, uh, the Improve Association, uh, I'd like to make that request.
I don't know, they seem to be, for, for whatever reason, I think the majority of them seem to be against it. I'm not sure if it's, they're against it for health reasons, I'm not quite sure why they were against it. But I, I just think the town has a responsibility to do it. Uh, we're doing it, and I, and I think that's perfectly adequate.
Well, I disagree that we have to do it, but, you know, if you can save some tax dollars, I'm not opposed to that. You know, the Improve Association is, is a tax-exempt organization. They do have income, so they don't pay any taxes on the land.
I, I agree with what you're saying, Joe, but they've been given an opportunity, and I don't think we're gonna accomplish anything by trying to force them into it. The, the, the opportunity has been there if they chose to take it, and they pretty obviously didn't want to. Whatever their reason is, I don't know if it matters.
Okay, I'm just, just, just bringing it up, a suggestion that perhaps if, if they wanted to send a letter from the board, asking for them to take the money that they had put aside for the village pool to help the town. That, that's all I, I asked, so. If, 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 if there's no interest.
Is Nancy still on?
Yes, she is.
Nancy Merrill still on?
Yes, she is.
Yes, I am. Sorry, I mean, go ahead.
I mean, you've heard the conversation that just took place.
Yeah.
And, and.
The only thing I could add is that I know that the money that was set aside, uh, for the porta potty, well, not set aside, but was budgeted for the porta potty at the swimming hole, um, it's a ninety dollar a month fee that we were gonna pay. And I think the handicap restroom is what, one ninety or something?
Well, we got it for one, one fifty.
We have a meeting tomorrow night, uh, no, Wednesday night, sorry. We have a meeting Wednesday night, and if you want, um, um, I could ask that it be put back on the agenda if you have a letter or something.
Well, Nancy, you, I'm not asking them to, to put the whole number up.
No, I understand.
But if they would, if they would take whatever the, you had budgeted for the ninety dollars for whatever, and that would be, that would be a help to the town and the taxpayers, that's all I'm asking.
Well, that's why, why don't you draft a letter? That, um, I mean, you could, I'm gonna be in the town hall tomorrow, and again Wednesday, so I could take it to the meeting with me um, Wednesday night. If you want to draft some kind of a request, so that I, you know, don't misunderstand what you're I'd rather it come from you in writing, so that I don't.
Well, it, it has to be a board. The board has to vote on that. The board has to vote on it.
Well, but if you want to do that, I'm happy to deliver whatever, um, questions you want asked, requests. So, I'm, I'm happy to do that. I can't speak for the board.
Oh, I know you can. Well, Stan, you were against it, and so was Kathy, so I mean, if that changed your mind, would you still want to?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said Stan and Kathy didn't want to pursue it, so I'm asking, have you changed your mind if you, if they just gave the ninety dollars towards the, whatever that, how many months that was? Or send a letter, or should we just forget about it and move on?
I, I, I would be more comfortable at it, with it, if, um, if, if Nancy, for instance, just brought it up as, as part of a discussion, as opposed to being somewhat of a formal request from the from the town to do it. I mean, if it just came up to say, hey, look, we, we, we just wanted to spend this money, why don't, why don't we put it uh, towards this, and make it some informal request? I, I just don't want to, I guess, make it a formal.
Right, uh, has, or maybe Pat, you know, Pat and I together, Stan, um, is she going to be at the meeting Wednesday night?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so I'll talk with her at the beginning of the meeting and see.
Okay. I mean, I, I think that would just be better, in my opinion.
Okay, whatever, you know, whatever you all decide what you want to do, just let me and Pat know.
Well, as a board, are we comfortable just having Pat and bring it up, or, or would you like to drop it?
No, I think, as far as I'm concerned, if, if they're willing to bring it up, is, is, is just one of the, the discussion point on their, I, I think it's fine. I think if they get a letter from the board, it's almost like a little bit of a pressure point, which I don't think is.
Yeah. I, I, I understand what you're saying, Stan, saying, Stan, I'm trying to speak here, while I'm eating. Um, and we could bring it up and just see how it plays.
Right.
I think a suggestion might go farther than a demand.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so let's, if, if you're willing to do that, Nancy, then let's, let's move on to the next issue.
Okay.
Good answer.
Sure, you're welcome.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Nancy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The next item is the, um, town hall work windows.
John, you want to do this? You want me to?
No, you go ahead, and I'll chirp in.
Okay. Um, I think, uh, you all got an update for the town hall renovations. I think Bill sent it out today.
Yep.
You should have all gotten it. That pretty much explains, um, kind of the direction that the, the building committee is sort of looking at at this point. The, what I'd like to see, and I think John agrees, uh, I would hope anyway, is that the windows, um, the, and the crawl spaces, and insulating under the crawl spaces, we're hoping that we can do that with some sort of a, uh, historic building renovations grant. Uh, I've asked Bill to look into dates and, uh, things like that. Um, as far as getting, uh, those, as far as, uh, having it be done in a grant. Now, I know there was a question on the windows. Um, we had gotten one, one response back, and I guess it was a concern for the cost. So if you look at item three on that uh, letter that I wrote up, it talks about the windows. Now, those windows, each one of those windows is a custom-made window to fit that opening. Now, these are good, these are Anderson windows, they're thermal paint, the argon filled, they're full screen. They're custom-made to fit, to fit each one of those openings. And just to purchase, the, the contractor to purchase those windows is over a thousand dollars apiece. And, and so there's nine windows. So the cost for just out-of-pocket expense for the contractor is over nine thousand dollars, just to buy those windows. And then that little roundtop window that's on the inside of the stair tower, uh, there's gonna be a custom interior window that has to be built. So, uh, that roundtop actually becomes, uh, it has an insulated space in it also. So it is not an inexpensive project by any stretch of the imagination, but based on the individual cost of the windows, um, I don't think the overall cost is that then.
No, I, I, I understand. I, I had no idea that the windows cost that much, so, yeah, right.
I wouldn't have either. Uh, I mean, actually, I went online, I tried to find something equivalent, and a stock Anderson window. Now, these are a stock size that you can go to Home Depot, and this was actually from Home Depot. A stock Anderson window, not clad, these are clad on both sides. Uh, and, and if you read that, uh, third paragraph, it explains it. It's clad on both sides, the window grills are inside the glass to make cleaning easier. So that all adds up, and I think in the long run, that really helps. Uh, to be able to clean the windows, you never have to repaint them or anything to that point. So anyway, I just tried to make a comparison. I went on Home Depot, and a stock-size Anderson window, not cladded, and not with the, with the, uh, mullions between the glass, they were almost six hundred dollars from Home Depot. So it doesn't surprise me that each one of these windows, made to order to fit the openings, with all those other bells and whistles that we had talked about, uh, comes up to a thousand dollars.
I, I think what we have is like thirty-one thousand dollars to use. Am I right, Stan?
Yeah, that's, um, I got that right here.
Hey, well, if that being the case, what I would like to see done, starting right off, is the installation of two heat pumps, in one in Kim's office and one in Bill's office. And the windows done, and the crawl space underneath, and the floor with the vapor barrier, and that number five, we don't have a price on. I don't think he's coming in, what, the next week?
Thursday, uh, this Thursday, actually.
Thursday. Well, that amount will add up to somewhere around probably twenty, twenty-nine thousand dollars, and in the future, we can upgrade electrical to take care of, uh, the additional heat pumps.
So, yeah, if you look at the capital budget, there's roughly, uh, the figures that I have in the capital budget right now, uh, uh, town hall renovations, eleven thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The fund balance that's left in the, in the town hall renovations will be twenty-one thousand. It's a little bit higher now, but there's a bill that has to be paid out of that. So between that eleven thou, eleven, two thirty-nine and twenty-one thousand, it gives us about thirty-two thousand dollars that we immediately have to, um, to, to do this work. And the thing to remember is those heat pumps under, um, what would it be, item one, if you look at it. It's kind of a little bit of a push to get this thing done, because there's a lot, there were a lot of incentives out there through Efficiency Vermont and, uh, Green Mountain Power. But we lost a significant incentive, uh, on seven thirty-one. Another incentive goes away on eight thirty-one. So if we were to do those two units right now, all we have to do is sign a piece of paper, and, and just so that the contractor knows that the work is going to be done. We get the current incentives. If you wait till after eight thirty-one, we're gonna lose probably another, uh, maybe a thousand dollars uh, just on incentives. So the profit cost of that work that, that we're currently talking about, which includes the electrical installation for these units, is about seven thousand dollars.
So Stan, what you're saying is that you, you're, you and John are recommending that we go for the windows, the heat pumps, and all the, the other things we have to do, and then if it comes to whatever, twenty-seven thousand, whatever, and then you're going to apply, or try to apply, for a grant?
Ideally, yes.
No, you, you can't, you can't. If the work's done, if the work's done, you get no money.
Yeah, I was, I was hoping to put the windows, I mean, all of this stuff really has to be done. But my hope was if we could apply for the windows into a grant, um, and, and one of the crawl spaces uh, as part of the grant. And I haven't added, uh, I, I really haven't added all this up. Um, John, you did, I guess.
Mm-hmm, yeah. But, but you, you can put the windows off till after the grant, when you know where you get money for the grant. So that's, uh, fourteen thousand you can put off until then. I hope, what, end, end October, you know, on that, Bill?
No, you apply in October, you won't know until whenever. My other question is, has anybody ever looked, and Kim, Kim asked me this question today, and, uh, was, how much of this work have we asked for before, and this is the same thing we asked for, for instance, in two thousand and ten, you have a, a state, uh, historic, historic preservation officer letter saying that all that work you're talking about in, uh, in, uh, two and, uh, four, four and five, wait a minute, once we begin to, no, no, on four and five, all that work da- downstairs, on four and five?
Yeah.
Uh, though, you got a ship-o letter on that way back in two thousand and ten. Did somebody ask for money for that then, and not spend it on that?
We've looked for grants, but I don't remember anything ever coming back that we got money for it, so I would have thought if we got money for it, we would have done it. But I, I don't remember that. You're perfectly honest with me.
The only money I remember getting is, um, Dalton to do the front porch, and then when we had Eric, um, helped us out with the insulation. I think those are the only grants that, um, I remember, like Rachel applying for, and she went through the, um, the preservation grant.
Yeah, I don't remember anything like that.
Uh, did I chime in at some point?
I don't remember.
No, those papers that you sent out, Bill, today, were, when I read them, it, all it said to me was that we were probably eligible, because it was historical. But it didn't say anything about anybody applying.
No, I, no, absolutely, that's my question. Did anybody apply?
Well, who, you gotta ask somebody that was on the board back then.
Oh, my God. Have you read the minutes from back then?
Who wants to chime in?
Eric Stevens.
Okay.
Um, we had a Wyndham Regional Commission grant to do the insulation work. And we also had an energy audit that charted a path forward for bringing the rest of the building up to, uh, an energy-efficient state. Uh, basically, we did the top of the building, but we didn't do the basement, which is the most important part, uh, after doing the top. Um, it's great that you're doing, uh, a vapor barrier in the basement. Uh, that's certainly a very, uh, necessary thing to do. But in insulating, um, the rest of the basement, uh, tension really has to be paid to the, the sill rim joist area to make sure that's air sealed. Um, and you're spending a great deal of money on windows, which is fine, but the biggest, uh, loss of energy in the building is not necessarily windows, it's air sealing. So to find out whether or not the installation of the windows has been done in a way that really, uh, makes the building energy-efficient, you should be doing a energy audit with a blower door and a thermal camera to see where the air is coming in, uh, or going out, as the case may be. It's going out in the windows at the top, and it's coming in around the rim joist area and windows down below. Um, in, in other words, you have to look at the building shell as a whole, it's the windows, it's not just the doors, it's all the other cracks that, uh, you have to seal up. Um, there was a, a path charted forward on the, the, uh, report from the energy auditor way back in the Wyndham Regional Mission grant time, uh, that talked about these things, but they were never implemented. We did have money, I don't know whether the money got spent on other things, but I do know that there was a lot of money back then that didn't get spent.
I, I absolutely agree, but if you go up on that second floor and see those windows that's up there, Alan and I were up there one time, we struggled to try to get the windows to close, and you can't get the, even the storm windows, uh, to close. Um, I mean, those are really inexpensive windows that were put in. I mean, they were put in up there when the Nature Museum had their display unit up there.
Not arguing with replacing the windows, just saying that the windows are not the, uh, necessarily the total solution.
I, I, I absolutely agree.
Well, I think we understand that, but we've got to start somewhere and do something. There was an energy audit done in two thousand and ten, and since then, there's been very little done. There's been a lot of talk of stuff, but nothing gets done. So I think that we should do some of these recommendations and, and get started on it.
Not arguing with that at all, not arguing with the heat pumps, just saying that in order to make this the best job order to make this the best job possible, you need to be able to test the air infiltration in the building.
Absolutely, I agree. But we're part of this project. Go ahead, Alan.
I agree with what Eric's saying, but I have an even bit more basic question. If the heat pumps are as efficient as they claim to be, and if we are currently using old technology air conditioners to cool down the buildings, it would seem to me that the high-efficiency, low-energy-demand heat pumps would be more efficient than using the air conditioners and low-efficiency oil burner system. It seems the heat pumps is the first thing to do, and the energy we're losing, still want to fix it, but that becomes less of an issue if you're heating and cooling with more efficient technology, if you follow my thought. And if we are using air conditioners on the electrical system that's currently there, and we replace the air conditioners with a more efficient system, why do we need to upgrade the electrical system for only Kim and Bill's office? I understand upgrading it if we put heat pumps upstairs or we put heat pumps in the post office, but for just the Bill and Kim's office, it seems like if there's enough energy to do it with inefficient system, there ought to be enough energy or electricity with a more efficient system.
Yeah, there is, Al, we don't have to upgrade the system to do those two heat pumps.
Right, you're absolutely right.
You're right, we had an electrician in that looked at it, we don't have to do anything.
The only way that the next step would be is if we have to add additional units, I know there's a thought process to want to upgrade the second floor for eventual use again with an elevator. I mean, if we start looking at an elevator, heating units for that second floor, we have nowhere near the amount. But the minimum amount of work that we want to do right now, you're absolutely right, Alan, we've got these old air conditioners that are pumping away in there. If we put these other units in, the electrical consumption probably will go down. So we don't have to change our electrical service to do the minimum amount of work that we want to do right now.
It would seem to me that the logical thing to do, since we're on the clock, is to do the heat pumps, that should be number one. And then decide whether or not you want to apply for the grant, or the windows, or whatever, and then do them later. One more year on the windows, it's not going to make any difference, but certainly, it will make a major difference if you don't upgrade the heating system, that's for sure. And that's, to me, it's a no-brainer.
Well, that was my point, if we could just see if we can get those other units on, if we put the windows off and see if we can get a grant for that. I'd like to see if we can get the crawl spaces done, particularly the, all the fiberglass, all the insulation under Bill's office and under Kim's office is all falling down, and they're all vented to the outside. So those floors are very cold. And this Thursday, I've got a foam company coming, a foam insulator coming in to look at these spaces to give us an idea what it would be to, we're going to get all that fiberglass out of there, they're going to come back in and foam, and again, it's what Eric's saying, is the rim joists underneath there on those crawl spaces and the entire floor area underneath both Bill's and Kim's office.
Well, to me, if you're going to do the heat pumps, then you should do the insulation. Because if you don't do that, then what you're doing is you're doing half the job.
Right.
And if it makes any difference, when I, the renovation on the house in town that I own, the Vermont company does the foam, they're very good, by the way.
That's worth it.
We only did the floor, but we also did the foundation down below, and that makes a real big difference. And I can tell you that that's what should be done here at the Town Hall.
So what we should do is one, four, and five now?
Yes.
And make a motion that we go forward with one, four, and five as recommended.
Do we have a second?
Last second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, on Stan and Al, John, will this address the radon, the high radon reading that we had gotten by putting that barrier down?
Oh, yeah.
Because that kind of, you know, concerns me that we had a high radon, even though I know they say it probably won't come up through the floor. But anybody gets concerned of a high radon reading?
Oh, yeah, I mean, you do have a lot of, you do have a lot of rock just in the foundation of the building itself, but this is going to cover if there's any ledge or anything like that underneath the dirt, this will definitely seal all that off.
Okay.
So it will help.
I think that's important.
A hundred percent, but it certainly will help.
And that's where we spend a majority of our time is at work, so that kind of concerns me.
So Stan, you would contact these people so that they could get going on it?
Yeah.
Especially the heat pumps, they need a okay before the 31st, or you'll lose that.
Yes, did we vote on it?
So we have a motion on the table, all right, to do one, four, and five now. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So whoever, whether it's Stan and John, why don't you just proceed and get going? And make sure you get that thing signed before the 31st of August, so we don't lose.
All we got to do is we'll get it, I'll get it into Bill, and I assume that Bill will be the normal signer for this stuff, or however we want to do it. Yep, we'll get it going.
Yeah.
But I'll let the window guy know that we're waiting for a grant.
Okay, and then we should apply for that grant, I don't know who's going to do that.
Yeah.
I've been looking at that because there's a lot of stuff you got to do.
Yes.
Historic grant, you got to show the historicity, most of that's all been done, but I have to get all those documents together, and that's what I've been gathering, all the ship-o letters from the past, so.
Because more than, I mean, 95%, they're not going to cover air conditioning, so air conditioning, I just, but I think replacing the windows and the historic aspect of the Town Hall, I think, should be fine situation.
I agree. Okay.
And on that historic grant, you've got to be very careful on the deadlines.
Yeah, I, yeah, we talked about that.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. All right, the cemetery, Bill sent you some information on the cemetery. Stan and I met with Streeter Jr. As far as Stan and I understood is that he's okay with it, but it has to be okay by Mrs. Streeter, and he suggested that we give an overall proposal so he could take it back to her, which I met with Bill today and we put it down. So if that's okay with everybody, then we'll send that on to the Streeters and see what happens. If you want to make any changes or you want to make some additions, then please, let's do it today.
I don't look good.
Yeah, I went through it, I didn't see anything that, they seemed to be really willing to do it, but it is the mother at this point, that has to be.
And the sticking point that he indicated to Stan and I was, the road, and that's why we added the gate. I guess she, I think, correct me if I'm stand, she didn't want any changes or something, was that what he said?
Yeah, that's what he said, but, yeah. It would be hard to get that access to the back without doing that.
There's no question, yeah.
I mean, not hard, it's impossible.
So if everybody, if we all agree with this, I guess we should, do we need a motion to send it on to her, or should we just commit to do it, up to you guys?
I just think that's, we're not committing anything to it.
No. So if that's okay with everybody, then I'll have Bill forward it to the Streeters as soon as possible.
You haven't heard back from anybody else, Bill?
No.
No. One out of four ain't bad.
But I think this is really a very nice site.
Good, you got one.
Yeah.
This is a nice site, it really, it's right in the same area with the cemetery, and I think this is really a perfect opportunity if they're willing to go along with it.
Yep.
So we don't know if this is going to be a gift, or are we going to get?
She talked about it as a gift, but that was with no specifics as to what they were giving, so depends on how she accepts what we're looking at for property, but it may very well be that they're going to give the whole thing.
Yes.
The only way we know is sit on and get some feedback.
It's not an all-or-nothing proposition, right? You make a proposal, she could come back with a counter and say, well, I'm okay with this, and so we're just kind of starting the negotiations and
Correct.
we're headed in the right direction.
Absolutely correct.
The real purpose, Alan, was that it was his recommendation, Streeter Jr.'s recommendation, that it would be easier for her to understand that we were putting the right in, rather than a verb, so that's why we did that.
Yeah, and I'll send the maps, the maps I sent to you, I'll send to her.
Okay.
I also gave Streeter Saban Jr. a map that I had done off of the Town Tax Map. So he has a, and it kind of follows what you were saying.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, the other issue we have to do with the cemetery is that, I guess I met with Walter, and Stan was happening to come in there as well, and I think he met with Walter. I think either somebody had a lapse of memory or we got a good wink.
If it's personnel, do we do this in executive session or open session?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's anything that we need to go in, Alan, it's not anything personal.
Well, no, I think what, the way you started that sentence, Joe, that would be personal, but the question is, if you're just going to ask, do we want three employees or two, that's a completely different question, but the discussion on that, you may want to go in executive session.
So what, I think there was a misunderstanding on some other, either by the board or by Walter, and we met with Walter, and Walter said, it's okay with me, we'll just go with the two people, we don't need the third person, so if, you know, if you want to discuss anything further, go ahead, but.
And just for clarification, the two being Jordan and Walter?
Yes, and so the board knows what Walter has been doing, he's been cutting back his hours to give James more hours, which doesn't make any sense.
When we talked about this earlier, was Walter's brother didn't want to work in a cemetery anymore.
Right.
But he would be available to work to help Walter mow along the roadside, the bridges and stuff, and I was not in favor of that, if he don't want to work in the cemetery, I don't think he needs to work along the road, his other man could probably do it.
No, I think Jordan and Walter could do whatever they need to be done.
I don't think we need three people, and especially one picking up sticks.
I agree.
Yep.
So if it's okay with everybody, then we'll just let Walter know that this is the crew, it's Jordan and Walter, period.
Absolutely.
And Walter seems to be okay with that, so.
Yeah.
Okay, pretty one, nobody has, as far as I know, nobody has applied yet.
Correct, correct.
Hey, Joe, did you miss number 10?
Yeah, I did.
Number 10?
Oh, yeah.
The cemetery.
COVID.
Mine is 10 is the cemetery.
Mine was coronavirus.
Yeah, I don't know what.
I took coronavirus off the.
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Before I sent it out.
Okay, you sent some any of them, I don't know which one to keep.
It's always an issue.
I know. Keep you on your toes, you guys.
We are.
Do we have any other business?
Yeah, I would like to have us go back to 3 o'clock.
So would I.
Look at how many we got, we don't have anybody.
Nope.
Don't have anybody at 3 o'clock. I do know, I do know it's easier for Danny to participate at 6 o'clock.
I like 6 o'clock.
Well, let's put it, I'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting, we can discuss it. But I have to agree with John, but that's, you know, let's put it on the agenda.
When I was on the board some years ago, we used to have a meeting at 4 o'clock.
Yeah.
Somebody raised up and said, well, you've got to have a meeting when most people, most of them show up, so we moved it to 6:00 then, nobody else showed up.
No.
Any other business? I do think if you have a meeting at 3 o'clock, you're limiting that meeting to people that are either retired or people that their job is sitting behind a desk at a computer and they can participate. And I think it's disrespectful to the people that are working that could make an effort if they needed to, to make it to a meeting at 6 o'clock.
Yeah, I doubt it, if Dave could have made the meeting if it was at 3 o'clock.
Yeah.
Why don't we put this on the agenda to have a real discussion with on the next?
I don't see anybody on there. We get our business done, but we are doing it for the town, not for ourselves.
I understand that, but who's on at 6 o'clock?
Okay, guys, let's have the discussion next week. Do we have any other business? Okay, not any public comment? Let's see, public?
Yeah, I'd like to put my two cents in for 6 o'clock.
Who's that?
When I'm not working, I don't like to have the idea of breaking up my afternoon.
Who's this?
Eric Stevens.
Eric, okay.
I also like 6 o'clock, this is Wendy, I like 6 o'clock too.
All right. Do we have any other public comment? If not, the date of the next meeting is December, September 7th. Now, maybe we should talk about, that is actual Labor Day. Sometimes we have changed the meeting to the next day, and sometimes we've had it on holiday. So rather than dealing with this later, is everybody okay to have the meeting on Monday, the 7th?
I'm all right with that, at 6 o'clock.
Well, it's at 6 o'clock, yes.
Right, right.
So if there's no objection, that would be the meeting, so. Okay, a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for the meeting, have a good evening, stay safe.